Council of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, August 1st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street. Our invocation will be provided by Councilmember Lisa Parsons and then please remain standing for a pledge of allegiance.
To help me follow, we thank you for today and the blessing you've given us, Lord. We thank you for this wonderful community that we have to live in. The Lord be with each one of us, Council members, tonight as we make decisions for the future of our city. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Parson.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox. Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor. Mayor Pro Tim Kornman.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we will move into the citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. I believe we have five citizens this evening that would like to speak regarding a variety of issues and we will take these as they were turned in. And the first speaker is Carla Collard. If you would come to the podium and state your name and your address and the reason for addressing the council.
Thank you. My name is Carla Collard and my address is 630 North Ninth Street. And I've lived there for about 24 years. My children caught the bus at that corner the entire 12 years they went to school in I've worked my whole life to pay for that house at the corner of Ninth and Maud. I love my house. The city, Nevada, assisted the citizens and the neighborhood to get a historical marker and my home is on the historical register, as all my neighbors that are here with me So you can imagine my concern when I saw Jay's Corner Store open and the type of traffic that it was attracting, that was now walking by my house from morning all throughout the With one business license issued, it completely changed the makeup of my neighborhood. One night I came home from my job for lunch and when I went back out to my car, I realized that there were two people overdosing in my yard. And the police came. I really don't know what happened to those people. The other day, we saw a car pull through the intersection stop. The gentleman jumped out of the car, ran over and started beating up a citizen sitting on the sidewalk. There's hypodermic needles everywhere. There is trash everywhere. There's also cigarette-for-sale signs everywhere. And there used to be metal statuary artwork that was displayed in that park of children at play. So again, I'm sure you can imagine my concern with Jay's Corner Store. I don't know what we can do. I know that there have been over, to what I've been told, over 150, I actually think it's 165 complaints to that corner since they opened. You can look on the Internet, on a website that is called What's Happening, Poplar Bluff, and see numerous, numerous videos of people out of their mind, high on, I have no idea Right there on the corner where my children caught the school bus and I continue to work to pay for my property there. I, in trying to mow my grass, have been accosted twice. People bumping into me aggressively, asking me if I need my weeds eated. They pick the flowers out of my yard. And they hide bags of "I'm pursuing stolen items" under my porch where I come and go out of my home, as well as my children and a lot of their friends. I have a neighbor, Flossie Doyle, who is too weak to be here tonight. But she's literally scared to come out of her house. There is a house there across the street from her that, to the citizens' knowledge, is condemned and unoccupied, so I thought. But there is something really strange going on there that involves a lot of young women. And I'm here to seek assistance in this matter. Diana lives right next door to the business itself and is constantly berated with traffic throughout the night.
Okay, Ms. Collard, our five-minute speaking time has elapsed. Thank you for this information. I don't think this is anything that probably our law enforcement, our city management is not somewhat aware of, but I'm sure there's been efforts made.
And Danny Whitley has met with us. You know, I do feel like the police department responds when we call and they've been open to whatever they can do. It's just, as someone who works a full-time job, I don't have time to, you know, to police it myself.
Mr. Winters, did you want to add to this or elaborate on this?
I did. I just wanted, you know, that it's a situation we're very aware of and just, as recent as today, have had conversations with some of the parties involved to try to find a resolution. We're trying to find a way to fix this for you and your neighbors.
And I don't know what, you know, I don't know what can be done, but I am definitely concerned for my community, just, you know, my little community. People used to come there and walk in the park all the time. My son used to go over there and run. And, you know, people are too scared to do that, although I do think taking out the picnic tables helped, you know. I am acknowledging that you guys have been an open ear. But now this little brown house situation has revealed itself.
Yeah, can you tell me more where that's at?
You know, I'm right on the corner there of Ninth and Maud.
Yes.
Do you know where Flossie Doyle is?
On the other side.
She's on the other side, behind, you know, the little house there on the corner burned. And then people start trying to live in that little garage. It's that little brown house right across the street.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Well, Ms. Collard, we'll continue to take this under advisement and it's apparently being worked on and a lot of things are being considered as some solutions. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Really grateful.
I'm Diana Collard Howard. I live at 723 and we own what used to be 721 North Ninth Street. We are right next door to Jay's Corner Store. I'm here tonight to speak about this situation. I would like those of you who have come, are concerned about this, who are sitting back here to wave.
Okay, have a look.
Yes, quite a few folks.
We passed a petition around the neighborhood, which was turned into City Hall, and I thought your City Council people would have seen it by now, but apparently not. It says, "Petition concerning the business located at Ninth and Maud, known as Jay's Corner. We, the people of the neighborhoods surrounding this business, are presenting our request that this business be removed from our area. This business has attracted many customers whose actions have been a serious detriment to the peace of our neighborhood." And it has a list. We are scared to death with what we've been seeing going on. All of these people traveling back and forth and back and forth, loud music, loud cards, loud arguments with obscene language. The business is not closing till like midnight or 1:00 in the morning. They wake me up at least once every night and often several times. These people throw trash everywhere. We've observed a number of people, and it's been increasing all the time, carrying improvised weapons. We've seen rods and heavy sticks, baseball bats, bull weeks. We even saw a guy with a hatchet and a lot of people with dogs. All the normal walkers who used to walk in the park have been scared and off. We've witnessed fights. We've heard threats and we've witnessed people being threatened. We are constantly being accosted by people asking us for money. Theft, everything that's not nailed down tends to disappear. It's been absolutely crazy. Vandalism, turning over my flower pots. They broke a window on the front of my house, which by the way, my house is in the city brochure of historical architecture. It's number 16. It's the old settle house. There's been a sharp increase in drug trafficking. They look around to see who's watching and get around the other side of their car, so I can't actually see them exchanging it, but you know what's going on. And we are all afraid of retaliation. I think the window was broken in my house in retaliation. We're afraid to go out when stuff's going on. When I hear somebody yelling for help, I do respond, but most of the time it's just loud arguments going on. We live in fear. I mean, it's terrible. And it's like we can't move, we own our place, and who wants to buy into this neighborhood? Nice people who were renters and can move are moving out and their houses are sitting empty and being broken into by squatters. And it has been a bus stop and people are afraid to let their children catch the bus there. My next-door neighbor has a daughter about 13 and they're not about to let her catch the bus down there. And they work, so they have to arrange somebody to come and pick her up every morning. It's just crazy. In this petition, we had no time really to chase it around. We're all busy, but we picked up 51 signatures on this petition without even half-asking. Look, this is crazy. This store applied for a license as a convenience store. They don't even sell bread or milk in there. But if you need a crack pipe, they've got them, okay? They have a room full of gambling machines and all of you know what the problem is with that. So I'm just saying, we want this place out of our neighborhood. Thank you. Thank all of you for listening. If you want an example to see yourself, just come and sit down there for a little while and you'll hear it all.
Okay, well, thank you for addressing the council, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Collard. Francisco Escaville would like to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Francisco Escaville from Maya's Mexican Restaurant, 940 Southwest Good Boulevard. I just came over here, you know, to request a liquor license, well, I think a carer license to sell in my property I have over here in downtown in 408 Vine Street. So I want to do like every Tuesdays, like Taco Tuesdays, along with the food truck. So I can sell margaritas on the food truck and I don't know what kind of license I can have, but I apply with the State of Missouri to have for one year, permanent carer license for the entire year.
Where is the exact location that will be placed?
It's 408 Vine Street. It's next to the cafe here in downtown.
It's the old chiropractic office.
Okay. Well, we had passed the ordinance for the open cup, so that would, I guess, be sufficient to cover that. Otherwise, I mean, is everything in order permit-wise for him to sell alcohol?
So council would just need to approve the...
The open container, because he doesn't have a liquor license downtown, so he's kind of outside the loop for the entertainment district.
But we do need approval from the council.
You need to approve that he can do the open container on whatever dates he's requested.
Is there any...
So we're just doing a...
Voice.
A voice?
Yes.
Just be a verbal approval.
Okay.
Do you have any, is there any questions further from the council to Mr. Escaville?
He's going to have food trucks?
Yes, food trucks, yes.
Okay. Okay. And you will be serving the alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion to approve this request?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The request has been approved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Greg West?
I live at 1184 County Road 476. Tonight, I'm here to thank you, Mayor Davis and the council, for allowing us to speak. I'm also here representing the Butler County Landlords Association. Our president, Felix Baker, is with me. And we would like to talk to the council. This has been discussed a few times in the past about the city owns their own utilities, electric, water, and sewer. There's multiple things that the city can do that would be very beneficial to any landlord. Everybody knows how hot this summer has been and there's been several times that power has been turned off at a unit unbeknownst to the landlord. And if anybody's bought a refrigerator lately, you know they're not cheap. And so we've had losses due to power being turned off and food rotting in refrigerators, things of that nature. So we're here to ask the council to implement or some way to contact the landlords when the power is being turned off. It's a major thing for us because we may have somebody that's been paying great and they run out of us in the middle of the night. And it would really be helpful for something like this to happen. We would really appreciate you guys getting back with us. In fact, I think Mayor Davis and City Manager Winters, you're going to address our association next month. So we're here to ask that be one of the things in consideration.
When you say the power is turned off, what do you mean, for non-payment or just turned off?
We've had it both ways, where the tenant moved out and turned the power off unbeknownst to us. Councilman Smith, the majority of the time, it's a tenant that quit paying possibly us rent and most likely utilities. Most everyone, every landlord I know tries to work with folks. Things are hard, prices are high and, you know. But to answer your question, yes, sir. Generally, the power's been turned off for non-payment.
Okay.
And I do realize the city has a robocall system that quite frankly is worthless because it tells you that they're behind and it may be turned off. Well, that's not helpful because so many people, I know I have, you get behind on something, you get a notice, oh, I forgot that. Well, where it's really important is when it's turned off, because that's when the problem and damage occurs. So we're open to suggestions. We would love an input from the city and quite frankly, we need a solution and it's long overdue.
So when someone rents and gets electric in their name, do they say, "My landlord is Greg West"? I mean, is the electric company aware of...
The city requires a contract from the landlord before they can get utilities. Or there's another option. The landlord can contact the city and say, "I'm Greg West, I own 123 Main Street and John Smith is going to be renting this." Because a lot of the landlords, including myself, the new tenant does not have a copy of their lease. We email that to them and a lot of the time, you know, we require them to have the utilities in their name before we're going to give them keys. We've all paid plenty of utilities for people before they got them in their name. So yes, the city does have something in place for that.
So you're proposing that once it's turned off, then you're called? Or when they're on the list? Like what is, I guess...
Can I give you an example of another utility?
Exactly.
Ozark Border is our neighbor to the city. They never turn the power off or on unless they call us, ever. And if they don't get us, they leave a message.
And don't turn it off? I mean, how long do they...
Um, I've always called them back the same day, so I can't tell you. I just know that that works amazingly well. And the city has 13,000 meters and Ozark Border's got 39,000. So, I mean, we would love any ideas or any input. I can just tell you that it's very expensive replacing refrigerators and quite frankly, they're kind of in short supply right now.
Well, Mr. West, the city management and, or city manager and utilities manager are aware of the issue and they're working on this and they're seeking the best solution. So it is being looked into and we'll look for some positive resolution on it.
Well, we'd really appreciate if you guys came to us next month with some answers or ideas.
Okay, well, thank you.
One last thing. I own a couple houses in the Collard ladies' area and they're telling you the truth, folks. All you got to do is come out there and sit. One of my houses has a great front porch. You're welcome to take a look. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a Charles Reagan.
My name's Charles Reagan. My address is 727 North Main Street. It sounds louder back there. I'm here in regards to Jay's Corner Store. I've lived at my address for going on four years and I never had no problems. I mean, yeah, you got people walking by. There's a park straight across the street, you know, but there was a little bit of problems before, but nothing like this. This is just out of control. I can't believe that a town with 17,000 people has let itself get this out of control. I mean, it's insane. It's absolutely ludicrous to believe, looking outside. I can't let my daughter go to the corner to catch the bus because just as you've heard already, I mean, and, you know, this is just a city council meeting, but come on, I mean, there's got to be something done about it. I mean, and then three doors down from me, the other direction, I mean, you got constant drugs coming from that house to Jay's Corner Store, that house to Jay's Corner Store. I sit on my porch and watch. I've been off work for the last two weeks on FMLA and if I go outside to sit, that's all I see. And it's 24 hours a day. It's not just, you know, 7:00 AM or 9 to 5, you know. I got people stealing my trash can. I can't, I can't put my trash out, you know? I mean, I got to put my trash out by the alley, right? I mean, they'll come by. I've had my trash can stolen three times. I called the Poplar Bluff Police Department, you know, they send somebody out, yeah, but they're like, "Well, why do they want to steal your trash can?" "Well, I don't know. Why do they want to walk around with bullwhips and hatchets?" I mean, you know, it's just ludicrous. I mean, it's like, you go outside, it's like watching a Saturday Night Live skit. I mean, it's crazy. I mean, have you ever heard the term, like, "If you see something, say something"? You call the cops now, like, I mean, some of the operators are laughing at me when I'm telling them, "Yeah, there's a guy in my front yard, he's taking off his pants." Well, you know, why do you think it's funny? The kid's about ready to get out of school, you know? What's he look like? "Oh, I know him." You know, they come talk to him and that. So he's crazy. So what? Now I hear that he's locked up because he had terroristic threats towards Burger King. Well, you know, that's great for Burger King, but like, what the hell? I mean, it's, it's just insane. I mean, you know, my daughter was there and this guy's out there taking off his pants. I'm thinking that is a threat, you know? Eventually, what you're going to do is these people that are just running around, have no jobs, have no lives whatsoever, back and forth, drugs. I mean, people don't even go to that park anymore. I mean, the Parks Department put a sign up, okay? They tore the signs down. Now they got to stick them on trees way up so they don't... I mean, come on. I mean, it's, it's, like I said, it's like watching a Saturday Night Live skit. I can't believe it. You cannot go to any other town with 17,000 people and say that it's gotten that out of control. I mean, I've even offered the cops, one officer, he's been real helpful and, you know, he came over real nice, you know? I respect the blue, you know, but, you know, some of them laugh at me and I'm like, "Why do you steal the trash?" You know what I mean? I don't, I don't know. You know, I mean, go ask your detective that's posting up Facebook videos, you know, with music attached to them, you know? Isn't that like loss prevention for the stores?
Mr. Reagan, let's stay on the topic, which is Jay's Store and not revert to our police department otherwise, okay? We, apparently there is an issue and a problem there and it's been known from sometime. The police are aware of it. Our city manager is aware of it. So it will be addressed.
It's not just Jay's Corner Store. I mean, it's that way, I mean...
Okay, well, that's what we're talking to at this time, this referring to Jay's, that problem around the corner store.
Well, it is around.
So, yes, sir.
I mean, it's all right there. It's all connected.
Well, we appreciate that and this is going to be addressed.
Okay.
I assure you. Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, I hope so. I hope I don't see this on Saturday Night Live. I hope I don't see this on Saturday Night Live.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to direct it to Mr. Winters or, or the attorney. Have they violated any legal, have they broken any laws or violated their licensing agreement or contracts or anything? That, that you all know of? Because that's going to be our main issue. That's going to be a problem right there.
We're looking at that now and we're addressing the issue with the owner of the license and their legal counsel. We passed an ordinance back in June of this year that is probably being violated and we're, we're pursuing that issue now.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, it appears we have no other citizen inputs regarding any matters. So we will move into item seven, workshop items for discussion. Mr. Reagan, we need to go on with our meeting. So, thank you, sir. This time, we will move to the workshop items for discussion. Item A, the city council will consider a resolution of support for the rehabilitation of the Brent Tenon Apartments. A Mr. Chad Hardle will present this issue to the council.
Good evening. My name is Chad Hardle. My address is 2201 Walton Drive, Jackson, Missouri. And tonight, I'm wanting to present to the council the proposal that I'm going to be submitting to the Missouri Housing Development Commission to rehabilitate the Brent Tenon Apartments. These apartments are located at 2049 Greenwood Drive. They consist of 48 one-bedroom apartments for seniors. And they currently, well, being built in 1984, they've, we have kind of new standards nowadays for apartments. This building was not sprinkled, so I plan on sprinkling the building. It has through-the-wall air conditioner units, so I'm going to put in, if we get this approved, put in central heat and air, new cabinets, new floors, doors, roof, windows, a gut rehab of that building, as well as a financial restructure. I'm partnering with South Central Missouri Community Action Agency that will be providing services to the residents. I have Ann Smith with me today, the executive director of South Central Missouri Community Action Agency. And she's available to speak if anyone would want to have her elaborate on the services that'll be offered. And I'm here to field any questions that you may have about the units. This is a very highly competitive process. They, the state of Missouri has about one-fourth of the resources necessary to take care of all the requests of this nature that they have each year. So it's, it's very competitive. I'm soliciting the support of the city to do this, which helps my application. I'll also be, and I've also talked with Matt about letters of support from the chief of police and a few other things that I need to put together with my application for this. The renovations themselves will be about $3 million, three to three and a half million dollars. Total project will be, oh, about $6 million or $6 and a half million dollars.
So you're going to redo the whole building because it's pretty bad right now?
Uh, yes, sir. It's, like I say, I've been doing this for a long time and in fact, I have one almost identical to this going on in Cape right now. It's a 67-unit senior housing development built about the same time as this one. And there, you know, a lot of upgrades are necessary. Back in the day, these apartments were built with state-of-the-art technology and, and all the conveniences that we were used to then, but, you know, 40 years ago, things have changed and we can upgrade them quite a bit and offer a lot of modern convenience that these folks just haven't had.
Yes, because I've talked to several people out there that's, well, several of which have moved out because of the condition of the place. And I think this will be, be an asset if we can get this done. It'll be great for a lot of folks, I think.
Well, I appreciate that. It's, it is tough, but we will beat the averages. I don't know if we'll be able to do enough to get it approved this year, but the state of Missouri uses a point system and this does point very high, so we'll be in the running. And typically, if, if we're on the bubble and we submitted a second year, you have a better chance of getting it approved the second year. Management has changed at those apartments and they are doing their best to, you know, keep everything going and, and with the tools that they have to work with. But it's as much in need of a financial restructure as a physical restructure. So it will be the whole ball of wax.
Thank you.
I think just to, you know, one of the conversations we had, questions I had asked you that maybe to clarify with council is that, you know, this is currently low-income housing that's dedicated to senior citizens, 55 and older, and it will remain that way if this is approved and the ownership and the renovations, is that correct?
Yes, the, this will still be under the same program that's been under for nearly 40 years as far as the type of residents we put in there. We do have a little bit of flexibility to make it either age 62 and older or age 55 and older. We will be targeting seniors with a developmental disability, which can live there now, but we will set aside some apartments for them to specifically cater their, to their needs. And that's why South Central Missouri Action Agency is so important to this, to this redevelopment. It's, well, not only the physical and the financial, but adding services. So it's a very popular way to redevelop these properties. And I've been partnering with nonprofit agencies for, oh, 10 or 12 years now on, on my developments and it works out very well. Supportive services with affordable housing is a good mix. And, and what I'm finding from the agencies that we partner with is that they need stable housing to administer their services to their population. And they're much more successful administering those services if they're stable housing and affordable housing. One thing that this property has that is very hard to get these days is rental assistance. And this does have full rental assistance, which makes all the units affordable. And we can serve the very lowest income seniors in our community. And it will be nice when we're finished.
It's definitely in need, for sure.
There's a chronic roof leak problem and they installed a new roof several years ago, but it's, it's still not, not working. So that'll be one of the first things we address, as well as all the other trimmings.
Okay, Mr. Hardle, we appreciate you desiring to invest in, in our city and the, the housing platforms and, and what you're needing is a letter of resolution and letters of support. Okay, do, thank you, sir.
I make a motion to move to the voting session until August 15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council persons. I appreciate it.
And then, once they approve it, then I'll get all the other documents that, that you're needing too, so.
Sure, that'll be fine. Just feel free to call me anytime and, and anyone else that may have a question, I'll, I'll be sure and provide you an answer or find one if I don't have it. Thank you.
Item B, the city council will consider bids received for Shelby Rose Road Phase Two improvements. Mr. Dominic Thompson will present this to the council.
Good evening. My name's Dominic Thompson. I'm with Smith and Company. I think you guys have a copy of the letter of recommendation for this project. Basically, this project consists of paving between the trail and Shelby Road Phase Two. It consists of rumble strips along the edge of Shelby Road Phase Two and restriping the outer lines of that project. It also consists of putting down some delineators along the trail for pedestrians. I believe the funding for this project is through the TDD.
That is correct.
So I think we're recommending Jokrist. They were the low bid for this project. You had two bidders, the other being Robertson, I believe?
Yes.
Robertson Inc., bridge and asphalt, so. You guys have any questions for me?
Mr. Winters, did you want to add to this or elaborate on this item?
No, I think Dom's covered it pretty well. Like he said, it will be paid out of TDD funds, it will not come out of our city capital or general revenue fund, so.
And this has been needed done for several years.
Yes, sir.
And this would stop the gravel from getting onto the roadway and the walk trail.
Yes. I think it'll save, well, save the Parks Department and the Street Department some, some cleanup time.
I make a motion to move to the voting session on August 15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will consider a proposed ordinance establishing procedures for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers. Mr. Winters?
Sure. So this is an annual process that you go through as a city council that just spells out the procedures for those that need to declare conflicts. We do it every year, so.
I make a motion to move it to the voting session on August 15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will consider reappointments to the Green Forest Community Improvement District Board of Directors. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mayor. So this city council is responsible for appointing board members to community improvement districts that are within the city limits. And this one's for the Green Forest Community Improvement District and they're just requesting a reappointment of two current board members. With the, to two-year terms that will expire in June of 2026.
I make a motion to move this to the voting session to be held August 15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will consider repealing ordinance number 22-34, accepting a bid for a new HVAC unit for the Margaret Harwell Art Museum and amending the 2022 fiscal year budget for the city of Popper Bluff. Mr. Winters?
I've asked Mr. Whitworth to come and kind of help walk us through this. We, we approved a, an ordinance and that we need to repeal that one because he needs some more work.
Yeah, what happened was, it looked like $4,800 to replace just the upstairs in-the- attic unit, which I didn't know it had for several years, by the way, because we had three registers, but, you know, sometimes you have relay. But anyway, discovered there's one upstairs too and it went kaput. And so you guys generously approved the replacement of that. Well, well, the guys came and the bidder who won the successful bid, the guy who bid it gave us a separate price for that, but he, what he didn't tell them was the outside unit needed to be done as well. And when they went to install the new unit, they emptied the freon from the outside unit and discovered it couldn't be recharged and so it needed to be replaced. So then, so it doubled their bid, which brought that up to $9,500. We had an existing bid from Davis for 40, for $8,500 and so that would be, that was the lowest bid to replace both units. So I'm here to ask you to please consider doing that. We have a valuable art collection that suffers from poor humidity and overheat, like watercolor paintings separate from the backing and slide down, have to be remounted. And we have a cheap employee that has his office upstairs and I've got fans that I brought from home that makes it almost tolerable to live in. I have, I have the new printer that I got and it blocks the wind from that while, so I can keep my papers here so the wind doesn't blow the papers away, but sometimes they, they do anyway. So I'm working under those conditions and have all summer long. And so would appreciate getting that second unit replaced so that people then can come and, and see the upstairs gallery and the, and the art, art collection is, is protected and, and I can wear loose, less cool clothes or more cool clothes. But anyway, I would appreciate your kind consideration on this matter.
I would, I would think, think so, Steve. We appreciate you and the tremendous cultural value the museum is to Popper Bluff.
Well, thank you, yes, yes. I'm very proud to have this, this museum in Popper Bluff. I mean, it's a rarity. It's a gem and you guys have supported it and I thank you for that and I want to keep it going and want to protect what we have as well as I can, so thank you very much.
You need to stay cool. Do we have a motion to move this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application for federal, state, public assistance for the reimbursement of COVID-related expenses. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at some point during 2020, a federal disaster was declared due to COVID and because of that, the city is eligible for public assistance reimbursement from FEMA. So I've been working with FEMA, submitted overtime documentation from 2020 and 2021 that they have agreed to reimburse us for an amount of $34,784. Now that they've reviewed every, all the documentation that was submitted, now they require the next step in the process, which requires council approval and the mayor's signature on the final application. So it's, it's a reimbursement for some expenses that we incurred during 2020 and 2021.
I make a motion to move to the voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council will consider a change order to a contract with Robinson Fence Company for fencing at Link and Hillcrest Parks. Mr. Corsamiglia with our park director will present.
Good evening, council and Lori. I'm sorry that we have to start like this. I know it's only a few weeks in and you get to deal with some of my stuff. So in March of this year, we had a request from the State Park Land Water Conservation Fund to where we could get some extra money because the cost of our playgrounds were going to be higher as well as our fencing. But it appears that we didn't put all of that in, in together and that they have come with a change order of $10,950, which hopefully if we get, we've put in another request for some more money for the, from the LWCF. So that should pay for some of this $10,950. Obviously, it's not going to affect the city's budget at all, it just affects ours. But since this was February of 2020, when we applied for this grant, it was under the city of Popper Bluff and not Parks and Recreation. So that's why I'm here to request that we add $10,950 to, and I believe, Lori, they do have a copy of the contract? Okay.
Now, has this been, has this been done already or?
They're, they're in the process of putting the fence up. And actually, the way this came about, I, I had a brief discussion with Mr. Richardson on it, that it, there's like a basis of bids and then the basis of bids had the contract, but there's a couple words in the contract where I'm, I'm kind of beat that we, it doesn't have demo on there. And that's what they're saying is that they need this money for the demo part of it, which again, half of that should probably be paid for if we get the, if we get the funds back. Either way, it's been two and a half years. Either way, it's been two and a half years. I would pay this any day just to get Link Park and, and Hillcrest Park with new fencing, so.
So all of this is coming out of park department funds, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to move to August 15. Voting position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And hopefully in October, we'll have some new playgrounds down there as well. And I did invite Mr. Winters up to look at our pool, so if you guys get a chance to...
And, and he went. You forgot.
And he went. Um, yes, he did go. If you get a chance to go and see the pool, it's actually been updated as well, so.
Looks really nice.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, we will move into action required items. Item AA, ordinance number 8403. The city council will take action on an ordinance repealing ordinance 22-34, accepting a bid for a new HVAC unit for the Margaret Harwell Art Museum and amending the 2022 fiscal year budget for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for first reading, ordinance number 8403.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Counselor?
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 2234 dated June 6, 2022, amending the 2022 fiscal year budget for the city of Poplar Bluff and accepting the lowest and best bid for a new HVAC unit for the Margaret Harwell Art Museum.
Okay, do we have a motion for second reading?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 2234 dated June 6, 2022, amending the 2022 fiscal year budget for the city of Poplar Bluff and accepting the lowest and best bid for an HVAC unit for the Margaret Harwell Art Museum.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 8403 or bill number 8403?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? If not, roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor? Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Ordinance number 8403 has been adopted. Item BB, resolution number 1983. The city council will take action on a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding the annexation of property located at 3398 Canal Boulevard and owned by New Covenant Fellowship Church.
Motion for the reading of resolution 1983. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
A resolution with respect to the annexation of a certain unincorporated area to the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3396 Canal Boulevard in Butler County and owned by the New Covenant Fellowship Church.
Do we have a motion for adoption?
Motion for adoption of resolution 1983. Second.
Any questions, comments? If none, roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Fox? Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor? Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Resolution number 1983 has been adopted. Next item, uh, resolution number 1984, that's item CC. The city council will take action on a resolution making an appointment to the Historical Preservation Commission.
Motion for reading of resolution 1984.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, Clerk Phelps? Excuse me, uh, counselor?
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making an appointment to the Historical Preservation Commission of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of resolution 1984.
Second.
Questions, comments? If none, roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor? Councilwoman Fox? Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Resolution number 1984 has been adopted. Item DD, resolution number 1985. The city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application for federal, state, public assistance for the reimbursement of COVID-related expenses.
Motion for reading of resolution 1985.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor?
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff authorizing the city to apply for funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the State Emergency Management Agency relative to COVID-related overtime expenses for the Poplar Bluff Police Department.
Do we have a motion for...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor? Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox? Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Uh, resolution number 1985 has been adopted. Uh, we will be going into closed session tonight, according to manager Winters. At this time, the city council, the city of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.021.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.9, 1.11, 1.12, 1.13, and 1.14 revised statutes of Missouri.
I move that we enter into closed session following the manager's report.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox? Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor? Mayor Pro Tim Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, don't have a lot tonight. We have a new police officer in the back. Uh, everybody, uh, make sure to stop and say hi to him on his, on your way out. Glad to have you on board. He's in, in good hands getting training, so excited about that. The only other thing I wanted to mention, if you've been out Shelby Road today, um...
Oh, yeah.
There, there, there's a significant construction project going on that the State Department has, has taken on. They're replacing a section of Shelby Road. The northbound lanes, just north of Tin Box, so the two northbound lanes are, are closed, and they're reduced down to one lane of traffic each way. Um, it's gonna be that way for a couple weeks. They replace a section of concrete and let it cure, so, uh, be careful when you're traveling that way. They've got lots of cones and signs and arrows, um, but, uh, you know, just be safe going through there, so. That's really about all I've got this evening.
Okay, well, thank you. If there's no other, uh, business before the council, do we have a motion to adjourn a regular meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.